They didn't say the post said, well, the textbooks had said they were delayed. The thing that they're getting back now is that whole side of the Lord be just gonna get hit. Okay, something else? It's on two. Yeah, I am. It's on this time. Like from New York to Texas. Uh, but not until last week. But I'm sure that they've already got, there was one hurricane that already fell. There's another one. It's supposed to be after it. So, I don't know. And then it's both of them, like both of Houston, so it's not really south. And then he'll come back. Yeah.
How are you?
Fine.
It's summer, I'm on the sea one. I feel like if I put my days every day in a swamp every day. My hand enjoyment. It's like, yeah, I swear. I think I've been at my house and it's been good for me. Yeah. That's the start of the done. I'm like, I think come over and help me with my landscaping stuff.
We actually have somebody who lives in our backyard right now.
Oh, nice.
I've been watching her ranching, so he's only seven foot old. I'm just like, I found out I'm old.
Yeah, that's, that's why you do that when you're young.
Sure. I'm finding that out. And I'm also trying to have it like that. Happen to me.
Yeah. Like spoil and then give them that. I like that. All of a sudden, my blood died. Oh, still the weirdest. Uh, when they came here today, they had me blocked. But my name is, my guy. Oh, okay. Elvin. So how do you fix that? Well, I'm injection.
Oh, fun.
So I need to go back on Thursday to touch an injection. Cause I'm like, this is weird. Like it's ivory-ish. And then when I look out this eye, it looks like a crackle paint. Like cream crackle paint. Not black, not pink, it's not spotted. I don't have like a headache or it's not that. It's not swollen. Um, yeah. Yeah. And then it took my blood pressure, so apparently it's attached to my blood pressure. It's twenty six. I've never had a high blood pressure before. Yeah, except when I was pregnant. I'm not pregnant by the way. Not pregnant. That is. So. I don't know, I was like. When I see it's fine. Oh, yeah. Which is exactly what happened. She seems, she's young at all.
Not that I'm aware of. First time, you're gonna make them to light the next hour.
I don't think so.
All right, I got six thirty. Let's go ahead and get the meeting on board. Start with a roll call. Marcus Bush.
Oh, Gloria.
Tom Partridge.
Candy Partridge.
Taylor Say.
Jen Ammon.
Brittany Corla.
John Latola. Jay Bizar.
Olivia Frymey.
Angela Frymey.
Anytime.
Kristy Kelly.
Danielle.
Lady.
Emily Kershaw.
Sarah Kershaw.
Thomas Kershaw.
Denise Sampaika.
Candy Lopez.
Sammy Chum.
Rock Warner.
Katie Hasen.
Maya Lewis.
Austin Muffler.
Amber Muffler.
Julie Four.
Brady Four.
Ryan Four.
Preston Beaters.
Erin Beat.
No, I'm kidding.
Hey, everybody? All right, welcome all. Let's, uh, go for the, uh, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, of the great, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll start with the good news. Mr. Bush?
Yeah. Uh, we'd like to go and recognize our two thousand twenty five retirees and our re-retired commissioners. Lori Barber, John Condivor, Katie Hasen, Tom Hasen, Lada Klein, Diana Lee, Phyllis O'Dell, Mary Strawn, and a late addition is Leanne Frymey. So congratulations to all those individuals and best wishes. And don't be strangers, stop in. All like good stuff. So, thank you so much for your service, um, Rock Ridge School District, congratulations. Next one, Reece Wells.
Yeah, do you want to take it?
Uh, sixty years in education. Graduated. She had you twice, so that added to it. Bizarry had that.
Kindergarten teacher. I had, I had her kindergarten and sixth grade. So, uh, she like, she's like, she has the bonus there.
Um, yeah, I mean, graduated, uh, retired, um, thirty some years, and then all, then she came back and subbed for Rock Ridge District for another three plus years. Just this year decided that was, that was it. And so, very, very grateful for all of her, um, support here at Rock Ridge and wish her well, finally in final retirement mode and work size. So, yeah.
Reece? All right, the Prairieland Conference.
Yeah, Laney, come on up. I don't think I saw Evan. All right, so Laney and Evan Bolt were, were selected as the Prairieland Conference Leadership Award winners this year. So each year, um, the conference, each school in our conference selects two students, um, that meet three main qualifications, um, to represent our school, and then we get to take them to Pizza Ranch, and we did a little award ceremony, and it was kind of fun. Did you enjoy it? Meet some new people? Rent some people you already knew? Yeah. So, um, the main qualifications were, uh, honor roll for three quarters, um, three conference activities or sports. All right, I knew I'm at one point, what did you participate in this year?
Volleyball, basketball, and track.
Awesome. And then overall good conduct, good sportsmanship, um, and then an overall leader inside and outside of the school and inside the classroom. Um, and so Laney and both Evan were selected by our staff for this award and represented us very well. So congratulations, Laney.
All right.
All right, uh, I don't see any of them here, but, uh, did have a few, uh, high schools.
They were at DC, a lot of them, so.
Well, that.
Oh, we got on that one?
Yeah, high school first year, so we did have a few state qualifiers.
They didn't go to.
Uh, girls' track. And Taylor Frymew went the long jump. We had a cook in the high jump, uh, Kenzie Meyer was pole vault. And then we had two relays on the girls' side, the four by four and the four by two, which were the same for Leah DeCook, Taylor Frymew, Kenzie Meyer, and Keaton Needham, all, all went to state. I will say that our four by four going into sectionals was seeded, was it eighth? In the four by four, and ended up winning that one and ran well at state as well. So I think that was a surprise, but it was, it was good to see them compete that way. On the boys' side, uh, Brody Nicholson went the pole vault, Caleb Kunico in the high jump, and he also placed thirteenth. And then our four by four also won that, and that was Caleb Kunico, Jacob Frymew, Trevor Dyke, and Wyatt Osborne. And our boys' sectional was, uh, a very, very tough sectional. And so in the four by four, I think it was seven of the eight teams qualified, reigning state qualifying time they made it. So, and our, our boys finished second. So, uh, good showing there on that side as well.
And in the hundred meter dash, the first, second, and third place finishers at our sectional finished one, two, three at state. Two kids from Morrison and a kid from Leo Winslow, so very fast sectional.
And Morrison actually won.
Morrison won the team tile at state.
Good showing on our side too.
Yeah.
Then we have Coach Shab here, who's gonna talk a little about the junior high state ballpark.
So we had seven kids make it to junior high state. Um, Owen Wolf, seventh grader for Disguise and Shot, he actually placed eighth, so that was awesome for him. Um, Anna Mayerhofer, she had three events, one hundred meter dash, two hundred meter dash, and she was part of our four by one. Uh, Lauren Oakin had two relays, I mean, two events, two hundred meter dash and the four by one. And then part of our, uh, the other two in the four by one was Grace Powell and Reese Darwin. So it was, it was a very successful day. Um, it was very warm, but they did, they did well. They topped thirteen in place for the four by one, but it was a good showing. So, very proud of them for getting as far as they can. They dropped the baton in the seventh grade year. So it was like redemption for them in grade. It was awesome. So I'm just so happy that they, they got to go and represent and do so well. And hopefully we'll see Owen again next year and the shot in the viscous again. So hopefully can get, uh, some, a better placing. So now I am also going to talk about the junior high PE heart rate monitors that we were able to purchase earlier this year. So this, I brought one of them down. This is our heart rate monitor that are, we have new for the junior high. So this will track everything that they're doing. And we have these, I've already put them up in the locker room. So they ask a lot of questions already, but this is just information for them to look at on where they're at, when their heart rate monitor goes off. So it's all color coded, so they can see if they're in the blue zone, if they are in the yellow, which is the target where we actually want them to stay most of the time, and when they've exceeded their heart rate. So I got some good data out of them. Uh, the first couple times I used them, it was actually pretty, pretty fun. I used them just a couple times on my, um, six hour group. I called them my little like guinea pigs. They're, they're little seventh graders, they're hilarious. So the first day I used them, it was kickball. And, um, all of them, except three of them, made it into the target heart rate zone, uh, the whole twenty minutes. So I can individualize the heart rates to their personal activity level. So that's what we're gonna start in the fall, is we're gonna teach them about their heart rate, how to monitor it, what the numbers mean, how to take their heart rate and their activity levels, and I can individualize it and put that into the computer. So right now, the numbers, they were, it was all set the same. A hundred and twenty was the target. But, um, they all made it, and a few of them exceeded, which I was like, whoa. During kickball, that's extreme. That, we got some go-getters. It was quite, quite fun. Um, so there's just so many things that we can, um, monitor while doing this, and it's quite motivating. I did get some quotes from some of the girls. They're hilarious. So one girl said, it was fun to see my heart rate and see how high it got, and it motivates us to get moving. Another girl said, it makes me feel like I have bling bling on. So she must not actually have an eyewatch. Or wear a watch in general. She just really liked to wear the watch. She really liked that. She liked to see how high her numbers got. I got a hundred and sixty-four during kickball. And I did not like when you block the number. So the second time I had them on, I turned that feature off where they could see where their heart rate was. So the whole first day, they were watching their number go higher and higher and higher, or go lower. The second day, I turned that part off, but they could still see the color. So if they memorized the sheet, they knew what zone to self, that won't happen again. They will see that. Um, what's also pretty cool with these is they actually get to see the real data in real time. So when they put the monitor back on the computer to return it, um, it shows them their graph on where they were the whole time. And then eventually, I actually just emailed, um, John about this, they'll get that email with their progress. So this will definitely help with, um, students that might not be as active or might not think that they're trying, but I know they're trying, um, just to motivate them to keep trying. Cause some, some kids, they might not look like it to their peers, but to me, I can see what they're doing. But this will help me with the numbers and then to understand that they are doing something positive, that they are moving forward. So I'm really excited to kick this off, um, in the fall with all the classes. So I'm, I'm excited about it. So if I'm excited, they were definitely excited about it. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Um, eighth grade, hook by me, Holocaust survivors?
Right. Hi, everyone. Um, I actually want my students to speak more than me because they are the ones that had this impact. And I'm extremely, truly proud of what the work is that they have done. They worked super hard in conditions that were, um, not always the greatest because they had to use Zoom to make their calls and do their interviews instead of getting a face-to-face, but they made it work. They used email and all the technology things they could to get the questions asked that they needed to and all. So I actually want them to tell you a little bit about what the impact was that they had talking to these Holocaust survivors, writing the books, drawing the pictures, making sure everything matched, um, exactly as was what the survivor wanted it to because it's their living legacy and, so it had to be perfect. And it was frustrating sometimes, right, kids? It's, uh, been a little frustrating, but I also wanted, um, Evelyn Kershaw was also, she had a little, what did they call it? Celebration, because her book was just finished and published. So they had that at the Molding Library on Sunday, or Saturday, Saturday. And so I want her to actually just have, this is my copy of the book that she signed, but you can hold it and show them. And tell just maybe a little bit about what you got from the program as well.
So, um, I met with Dr. Marietta Castle. She, um, she grew up in Arkansas, moved here, and it was like a huge culture shock thing. So I met with her because, uh, Mrs. Lopez actually had like connections to her. And so they just decided to make this like book about her story and how like it was difficult for her to like adjust. And, uh, yeah, it was, uh, it was, uh, it was, it was interesting to like go through the process of like making a book and then editing it, and then rewording every sentence, and then editing it again, and then drawing the pictures. And it was, it was very, it was interesting. It was really fun, and I enjoyed making it, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Take that.
Here's your copy. I'm sorry guys.
Okay, and then Laney and Olivia, and who I got, Austin back there, you guys wanna come up? And Brady and Lyra. I think that's of the ones. We had thirteen people that were actually on four different books that they wrote. Um, we had an author, an illustrator, and then a media specialist on each book. So why don't you tell them your, just your book name maybe, and something that impacted you about doing this? Uh, I guess that would be enough to, but whatever you wanna say about your books and what you thought were good about it, maybe a little bit about your survivor. Okay?
Um, I wrote, I was the author for Runaway Hero, and it really just impacted me to hear her story and hear what she had to say about it.
Um, I was the illustrator of trauma and terrorism. It was a very impactful experience to have, meeting with Steve, like in person at a museum. And I just really like, I took into consideration like how important it is to get like his story, like, uh, representation.
Um, I was the illustrator of, was it some version for four or from? From deportation. And I feel like, um, I'm really happy that I got to interview you both because she wasn't like, um, really like, she just kind of let us draw whatever we wanted, and then she would have like a few notes for us to change instead of, um, giving us actual direction, which made it so I could have a lot more like creativity of myself than right now.
I was the author of Salvation from the deportation. And it made, the whole story made me realize how lucky I am to have the life that I currently do compared to Eva's, which was a little rough.
I was the media specialist for Runaway Hero. It was fun working on this project with my group, and it was fun talking to Frank because you get to learn about a survivor's story, and it genuinely, it was pretty cool.
Excellent. Thank you, you guys. Awesome. Couple of the things that they did too, they were under the RMJ, so they had a story that they came in in our classroom and saw what they were doing, and, um, they got a chance to see how that worked and give all their statements for that too. Uh, we did make a trip to the Holocaust, uh, museum, um, in Skokie, Illinois. And that probably culminated what our unit was in such an impactful way because it really felt in a kind of a 4D type of way, what it possibly could have been like to be in that era. So I highly recommend that museum if you haven't been there before. It's, it's very good, it's very well done. Um, and the students got a lot out of it as well. Plus, we got to meet one of our Holocaust survivors who came in our room and had lunch with us and talked with us. And, um, it was, that was phenomenal to meet him and get to actually talk to him face-to-face. All the other ones are, one's in Vegas, one's in Canada, and one's in Virginia, so we haven't gotten to meet those. But, yeah, very proud of these kids and many, the many others that also did this that weren't able to be here tonight. But they are, they're definitely hard workers and, um, hopefully learned a lot through it. So, very good. Thank you.
There was also a WQAD, um, news article on it as well, and like they came in and did a little video. So if you go on their website, I got the link, I can also share it, but the article was, or the news article was really great. Um, and I also wanted to say.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I just wanna say thank you, Mrs. Lopez, for this, and it's a lot of work you put, you go the extra mile with this and.
Thanks.
The kids really get a lot out of it, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, please share that if you. All right, that's the, uh, end of the good news, and if you're only here for the good news, it's a great time to make an act. Or you're welcome to stay for the hours. All right, at this time, we open the floor up for public comment. Seeing none. All right, the consent agenda, everybody have a chance to look at the consent agenda? Is there anything you want to like on there? If not, I entertain a motion to approve if the consent agenda is written. All favor?
Aye.
All right. We need, uh, public hearing for the budget at this time. We open up for questions, if there are any questions from the floor or from the board, um, about the, uh, budget amendments we talked about here last month and, uh, that are impacted here. Do you have anything you want to highlight?
Uh, the changes from last month, uh, the amendments we're making are for the, um, transfer of the working cash funds to, uh, the capital projects side, uh, as planned to help support the new project.
All right. There are no questions beyond that, we'll move on from the budget hearing. All right, presentation, new building updates.
Time to get this. Are you gonna pull up?
Hmm.
Um. I'm afraid to hold it, I'm just gonna turn it over. So what you have, um, in front of you is the different flooring type, or the different like walls, flooring, everything. So what's on here, these numbers and letters will match what's over here if you do wanna see it. Um, this plank right here is, just letters don't describe it, but it's very durable. And it will be done, the majority of the floors in the building. Um, there's some accent flooring where you can see like the duck blue or the yellow. So we'll have like the, um, accent flooring in some of the rooms towards the front. Um, we'll have background on the colors. Um, we wanted to try and bring it in in all the different areas, um, in the schools that will be coming together as one, which brought us to a bluish color, um, to represent the river, the Fallujah. Um, yellow, which represents the prairie, so Buffalo Prairie, as you can kind of. Um, we have green, which represents Wild Thunder Forest, being on preserve. And then we have a, the purple is River Ridge, Southern Ridge, so Reynolds, River Ridge, um, hills, I don't know, purple. But then, um, this one will be wherever there is, um, reference colors. Um, so if you look at the screen, this will be the cafeteria area, kind of. I don't think we're gonna have those type of tables, but, um, just an idea of what the cafeteria can look like. They'll have some booths there. And then above, that is the fifth grade common area and library, so they'll be able to look down, um, into that common space where the kids will be eating. The bright colored walls on the right is, they open and shut. So whenever we have a music performance, we can use that cafeteria area, also people that sit upstairs, um, for a show. We talked about adding two lights there too, so that way they can put lights on the stage, but, so that opens up the music room, creates a stage. So, um, that's where you can have performances. Here is the front entrance. Um, this is going to be our motivational slide for our students to set goals, teachers to set goals. We need all of our board goals, I think they're down there. But again, just bringing in the color, the, the color of the slide, I think might change. I think we talked about making it look like a tree kind of, like with making it creepy, so it brings in like that forest aspect. Um, so that's the main entrance.
I asked for an environment poll, would be telling me.
Will, will there be like a gator?
Yeah.
My husband, when he saw it, he's like, oh boy.
Yeah, so this is the K one, I think, pod. Yeah. Um, and that actually will be the library. So those nooks and all that shelving is where we'll be keeping all of our library looks. The top area, those are closed cabinets where we can keep storage of things. Um, and then the cubbies, uh, each student will have their own cubby. Um, so those cubbies kind of will be around the different pod areas for them to put their books and stuff. So this is kind of that collaboration space where kids will be able to work in groups. Paris can work with some students, they can get access to those libraries within their pods. It's pretty cool. This is the gym, and yes, we asked them to change the purple and yellow from being together because it reminded them.
That's one of my first thoughts, if you had purple on the first one, I thought we were supposed to kinda make it short.
I think they're gonna mix this color a little bit, you can do purple and t-shirt and things. But, um, this is the gym. It's pretty, I mean, it looks awesome, I love it. Um, they, it's kind of designed kind of like the high school with the gray, kind of mimics what Katie had, um, played out in her flooring up there.
Kind of, they're gonna go wood floor, they're like.
Yes, maybe wood floor. Um, then the rollout bleacher, you can also push in. And then you can see on the wall, it's kind of hard to tell because it's, but it's actually a multi-dimensional here. So these will go through, but their sound pads will like be all around it to, to reduce the sound level in there because it is gonna be such a big space with it being a, um, can we build a shelter?
Stone shelter.
Stone shelter. Um, and so those designs will be on the wall, but they'll build all of that sound flipping around it, and there's sound flipping on the ceiling too.
It's hard to look like a building.
No. This is just the backside to that, what you, what they'll, where you can look down to where Miss Hicks will be in the music area, and then like, again, the big pretty pod, um, so that way they can get their books and do whatever they need to do. This is the other side of that. So for them, they're going to have those booths there, but actually the shelves will pull out, and that will be from the library. So they'll be able to pull those out and have like a library. This is the other side of that. So for them, they're going to have those booths there, but actually the shelves will pull out and that will be from the library. So they'll be able to pull those out and have like a library space right there. And then an area where they can work together. This is two, three. I lost that one head. Um so same thing, same concept. Um all of those two gridoles, that will be their library. And then again, their own cubbies where they can put their stuff every day. But just another color scheme. They did ask us about certain animals and wildlife in the area, so I did send them a list of some of those things, the versatility. Um so that way they can put some of those graphics in. And then this would be a classroom in the two, three. So since it's on the second floor, there is some four to ten windows up here. I, I don't know if there are four to ten windows on the floor or not. And so this is what the classroom will look like. And they have all that casework, K1 stuff has scenes in there. A. A will have a scene. So the only difference in their pod would be that they'll have a scene thing right over there. Um but it matches shelving space. Here's that different vinyl. I think that's a focal point to the front of the classroom.
And so is that all the stories?
I mean, there, there's other bigger mass storage kind of.
Oh.
Pods, there are a few people around here, there's a few of them in there. Uh not a ton, but yeah, that's all the storage. But I think this other wall here, on the white wall, will open up and two rooms will have one central wall that can't open up to make a big room to do different, if they wish to do so.
And that's the technology in the space.
Um so TV with, there is with a baby and iPad, so it can be interacted through the iPad and play a movie. Right now, this is Hall and this is Rob and some have one, it's running now that they utilize. I kind of want to pilot a piece of it there.
Huh? It was just really cool to see um well, their reaction, the building team's reaction, were really excited about it and just kind of been so much discussion about it, not necessarily a single vision yet. Instead of like seeing it, it was really cool. Some of the tile work in the bathrooms is really cool that they did show us. Um just really fun. It was, that's the fun part.
They, they, they like our current building, but it's very beige.
Yeah.
So they want the elementary to feel different, to look different, to be different. Um and so as you see the colors on the outside, kind of wondering why different this, that, those match the pods from the outside. So you'll be a little bit, ideas of kids should be able to pull off with like that, that's a go over there kind of a deal.
So we'll call them by that, like two, three, four spot. Four, five, seven, the ridge. K1 is um prairie, preschool, they can sit over there. So that's all kind of designate them also because not, not everyone knows.
Just, I guess we question on the floor, um is that final or?
Yeah, it's. I don't remember what they call it.
I think it's LBG.
LBG. Okay, LBG. They don't have to uh scrub it, like do they scrub around it or um?
Wax it.
So there's no waxies or nothing?
No.
Nothing in there that fifty years from now is gonna cause cancer?
Chewing it. Um this is the casework, um so this is what the cabin crew looks like. And then these are for the sinks in their rooms and this might be a sink.
So that, that casework, once it constructed out of wood with a
Yeah.
laminate, like you're like.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah. And all the graphics actually look the same, so like maybe with the larger, they're just cut, you know, differently here, but they all look. That installed will be like a hard plastic.
So we can still clean with a mop and a vacuum. Same deal.
I'm listening.
What's next?
How do you? Um I think next is financing this, which I think we pretty much did after that day. And then we're gonna need to talk about their inputment next as well, um just to see what you can do there. And then hopefully break it down.
When, when you're ready, Andy sent me, Andy sent me kind of an update of where timelines and so forth.
Do we have, uh do we determine we have enough room in here for custodial pauses and stuff?
I mean, a lot of the, the big part is in the back and where the um I don't know where that kitchen is, like that big chunk over there, but they have small custodial closets throughout the building that they can store. Your mop bucket here is, I mean, the kind of deal, not, not the big floor mopper deals, but you know, they may have a little stuff, yep. Like in there, I mean, the sink wash basin, all that good stuff, I believe, so too. We want the big elev- elevator. All the pod to be secured at all times.
We did kind of rearrange the four or five date till they
Upstairs.
Rearranged that a little, a little bit, but very little, but they were able to get all the fourth grade and fifth grade rooms in the same pod, whereas before there's kind of one offset fourth grade rooms, but they changed and moved to the camp deposit because they had to, but then that a lot of, actually worked out better, so.
So yeah, there's those drop gates or whatever at the end of the floor so you can stop on it. First and second grade pond or the cave or the. Yep, so if you look in that K1 pod, you see the double doors close to the main entrance there and the old piece of it. Well, we have after school activities and so forth, those need to be open. So if you look, there's a light leading down the line kind of, yeah, that, that's there. And then there's also one upstairs in the um second degree pod as well, so it could open the restroom if you have a performance, if there are people upstairs, same kind of concept there. Um John and I met with JJ from FSS to kind of walk through where we're at. It's a, the goal is all those pod doors will all be locked for the day, all the time. And so they'll have buzzers on them, so when kids need to go to the nurse for whatever reason, for a bandage and come back, Dr. Buzz to get in the pod, the pods couldn't be open at that point inside of them. So some safety pieces that we have, among other big safety pieces too.
Do you have any images of where it connects to the current school? Great transition.
You look in that corner of the gym, it's just a little corner, maybe, just a tiny little corner there. Uh well, that's from the concrete in between that gym and that like pre-K pod in there. Trying to have some count more seating if we'd like to use it for the kids and so forth. And then maybe even an exit from that art and staff room that they can step on, use that kind of common area if they wanted to.
So this picture here is east looking west, correct?
That's from this highway looking that way. Just count more to put our timelines cameras for two years.
I wonder, uh the second straight patio is probably envisioned, I just wanted to see if the first kid's not.
Um as, as you see, like there's one connected, there's the one, it's connected between the two rooms that you have to like kind of stack to be utilized. And that one out front, um it's connected, I think, to the staff. Kind of deal with a lot of them, not saying that kids couldn't use it when staff aren't using it, but.
We get a staff restroom on every floor.
Yep.
And every pod.
Yep, staff restroom, the mother's room, and every pod.
And then there's a teacher's lounge, but the printer's kind of offset to it, so um that way someone can run coffee for nine or.
There's a lounge on each floor and each pod.
Each pod. And there's storage for each pod, like a storage room, each pod for teachers as well. And then they added in some cubbies, not cubbies, but maybe like lockers things to put down by the recess door, so that way Paris can store their stuff there, a lot if they want, but also they can readily get it for recess and stuff like that.
So what did you want, you have a guy?
Uh nothing, like I'm so excited about it. I think it's great to see um the rec, like the color representation of the community, I think is really cool to have that connection for the students to make. And they can even do like finding a wildlife, but then also they can do the informational pieces with that wildlife and its connection to our area and stuff like that. So the walls will even be a place the kids can learn, so I can't really do it. I haven't been able to get to it enough, but I've envisioned happening.
Well, St. Teacher. I've seen the University of Iowa children's hospital, they design similarly and it's pretty cool.
Yes. Yeah, very um child friendly. I actually was showing Lily and she was like, that's a school. Yeah, because it doesn't look like my school. I'm like, no, not gonna.
So we can divide this gymnasium and we can have multiple P classes.
Well, around two at a time. To get the, my, my goal is for them to have P every day, I think that's important.
So they'll, they'll have a drop that, just like we have in the south gym, that kind of rolls up there. Yep.
It's curious, the planes, it's just kind of like a bump out in the middle, do you know what that is?
A bump out?
That might be. Um boards look different flooring. That's the future side, but I don't know.
I wonder if the, that's where, does that show where how far the bleachers will come out when they're out maybe?
Oh, maybe.
Be my guess. It's one right at half hour.
And then two for, I was wondering, I don't know if we want to tackle it now, but um in building, thinking about the future too, it sounds like if we were to extend in the future, probably went off the previous. I was just thinking too, it's probably ahead of the time, but like um you know, just making sure like if there's anything like infrastructure wise, like in the future, like plumbing, water supply, things like that, that would be, if we want to turn ourselves down for.
Right, yeah, make sure we put our septic field part up late.
Yeah, um they, they've been talking, the last I've heard is that it's not gonna be right out here, it's gonna be down in that corner now. We can get down, to move septic field down further away from here, which allows us to open up the space right out here, so junior IP can use it, band can use it, so and so forth. So it actually looks that way. Move it down that way.
Have you any discussions with them? Where we can dump filter and get some, just bring some really.
So Andy's on top of that. He'd like to get it from two, max three spots because it all has to be tested on, it's slow board, it has to be all that good stuff. Um he thinks that he has quite a bit of spots, um quite a bit dirt coming from bag plot once that it's cleared and harvested and then um with steel, what is, I think, has um cleaned earth that's already been state approved, so on and so forth. So I think there's, there's some discussion with that as well. So um he's on, yeah, forty-three hundred semi-wellings of dirt. So yeah, um speaking of Andy, he, he did tell me he was gonna try and make it tonight, couldn't make it tonight, so um just kind of giving an update of where he's at with this project. Um kind of the, the beginning of July, BLPD will issue fifty percent construction documents slash CDs. Hodge will utilize these documents to establish an updated budget. Budget will be updated and presentable the week of seven twenty eight and twenty five. Like to target a meeting with the board around that timeframe to review and updated overall budget, maybe sometime the week of seven twenty eight and twenty five. Uh later in July, BLPD and Hodge plan to issue their first bid packages to the public. The bid package will consist of an overall site grading, site utilities, septic design, scope, along with a structural precast wall package for the gym. This early bid, bid package is to enable us to get moving on the site grading and earthwork sooner versus waiting for the overall construction document to be sent to be completed. This will also allow us to get the precast walls out for bid and ordered sooner as well. The bid package will have a bid date of Friday eight eight or Friday eight fifteen. We'll know the final bid date by the end of this month. Once we have that bid opening, we will want to discuss a board timing to review and approve the bids. So something to keep in mind there. Um then come up August, um BLPD and Hodge plan to issue the remaining bid packages to the public for bid. These bid packages will consist of the remaining elements of the project. These bid packages will have a bid date of Friday nine, twelve, of twenty five. We want to discuss the board review and approval of time, bid timing for these bid packages as well. Anticipated, anticipated site grading and earthwork activity starting September twenty five.
So it is September twelfth, that's the date that's going out, that's the date that he wants bids back.
These bid packages will have a bid date of Friday nine, twelve, twenty five, so.
So that's a bid due date?
On a guess, it would be my guess, yes.
Usually there's like a whole thing that's listed after that.
That's the beginning. Because that's, that's September due, it would be for the actual bid building, the site twelve, the precast. If everything else. From talking with him, he'd really like to have the foundation.
Oh, the twelve?
It's all. Pretty well set up for, you know, that. They don't like November kind of a deal and hopefully we can start doing stuff from there. As would be like.
Speed from. Because we can have that foundation done, yelling, we can really achieve. The idea is being done by May of twenty seven, that gives us summer to look at the end, to look at, we'll be ready for August. Could you forward that timeline kind of?
Yes, sir.
Um and then, uh so we need to probably work on setting up the meeting that we do at twenty eighth of July. If everybody's available. So, I was gonna be thinking of Wednesday night.
Hey Marcus, just to be safe, homecoming is September twelfth.
Okay.
Be nice to not be pushing any dirt until after that.
We won't push any dirt until, well, at least off the foot, off the, back through the uh FAP block until after October. We give those kids like the tenth of October.
Okay, I just meant.
My guess is a hundred dump bag versus they are.
Well, but homecoming parade and the use of that corner.
Yeah. So we're lucky we got an early homecoming.
Uh huh.
You say, is that September?
So the parade will be the eleventh? Sounds like it's okay, but just be aware.
Helps. Alright, so looking for that meeting.
That Wednesday, is what you?
You, Todd talked about that before. I don't know if, if that meant as soon as we start doing the earthwork stuff, or is that when we get ready for the foundation work, or now that's gonna be separate kind of deal. We, he talked about, we'd want to do a big groundbreaking piece, bring kids in, bring all the families that's supported. I mean, yeah, it's a big deal, it's exciting stuff, but I'd like to bring as many people in as possible and do all that good stuff, but yeah.
Did I ask that when you were writing that article on?
What was that?
Consolidating schools.
The apartment. So we're looking for meeting, uh July thirtieth, is that okay? It's up right now for everybody. Thanks, I'll touch base with. That's what, and sometime, so that'll be targeted, so hopefully.
One, two, three, four. Six? Five?
Six over here.
Let's go for six.
Let's go.
Okay, I'll confirm with um Hodge and BLPD about that July thirty.
Here?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, is, um, you know, Richard brought up, you know, it's a body tar testing, I think, did you think it's going to be something, maybe I'm just curious if
I have not heard anything the last, I did touch base with them because they did, we did a study the last, study. We wrote down the numbers of our water usage last week at school, and, um, QIMEG, and how much water and how many people we have for events and so on and so forth, so. Um, I haven't heard anything back as far as the water testing, as far as the pressure goes yet, but I know that, I know they're working on it.
Honestly, because I remember, very same, you know, if it doesn't work, I want to create a room for the pumps. Just trying to get that risk averted certainly.
My guess is a timing board, hoping they don't, my guess.
All right, any other questions or comments on the?
I do not need to, I need to stop out because my five-year-old and eight-year-old are going to, Mr. Goth is probably being high-sland right now. But they are.
Or if they change a color, it's gonna.
Thank you.
All right, financial reports there, Kenny?
All right, so, um, some things to point out from the main financial report is you'll see that, um, in the, we have some deferred revenue that's going to come, um, this month and next month, you'll see those. We've received our first property tax, uh, distribution from Rock Island County, and, uh, just as a reminder, uh, that money, um, is for next school year, so we've not officially earned it until we hit July first, so it's considered deferred revenue until that time. So, uh, that's what those amounts are, and then also we have, uh, reinvested those PMA funds into CDs. So typically, we have been investing those into treasury bills, but the rates for the CDs were slightly better. So, um, that's where the bulk of those funds are, however, you may notice that we still have some sizable balances in the liquidity part of those PMA funds, so historically, that amount has been pretty low. But since we moved some of our liquid front, liquid funds from Blackhawk over to there to, to earn the higher interest rate, you'll see that we have more money liquid with PMA than historically have, so. Uh, then, moving on to the revenue and expenditure report, um, revenue is up a bit, that is mostly due to those, um, maturity of the T bills, had to turn on May eighth, so we earned in total two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars off those treasury bills, and about a hundred and eighty-five thousand of that was in Ed funds, so, um, nice, nice return on those.
Yeah.
And we'll discuss how those were reinvested here in just a bit. Uh, so moving on to the cash flow report, we're almost towards the end of the year, so where we're sitting right now, we, we hope to see very little change next month, um, we are about, you know, one and a half million from where we budgeted in Ed fund, and that's, that's, uh, more where we like to be, we had a few years where things were all over the place, and we were even higher than that, um, although that's good, we want to, um, have a better idea on, um, you know, that our budget and actual are getting closer together, so we do like to see that those are getting more true to nature. And then also in the operation maintenance and transportation fund, we're about half a million from where we budgeted, so uh, right where we want to be, and I want to point out, the O and M fund, we were budgeting a deficit, we are just about panking up for that budget deficit, so hoping to break even there by the end of the year.
How, uh, how did the, this, um, the transportation budget I have made, what, what, let's jump down, which, no, your expenditures.
So, uh, we budgeted a lot more in repairs and maintenance and supplies based on what we had been spending in previous years, and we're just not spending that much in our expenditure, so.
So, so if you, so if you knew some PM.
Bus driver taking care of the bus.
All around, things are operating pretty good, so. Uh, and then looking at the interest at Blackhawk's Bank and Trust, you'll see that that's about half of what it's done, that's because we have, as I mentioned, moved about seven million dollars in funds to PMA to earn that slightly higher interest rate. Um, just to gauge kind of where we're at there, uh, we earned about twenty-five thousand at Blackhawk, and then we earned about forty thousand at PMA in May. Now, some of that is some of those T bills that matured in the timing of when they were reinvested, there's about a week or so that they were sitting there in that liquid fund, so that I don't expect it to be quite that high next month, but still, all in all, we earned about sixty-five thousand between the PMA liquid fund and the Blackhawk, uh, liquid fund, so that, that is an increase of what we've seen recently.
Those CDs are those six months terms you've been on?
Yes, yeah, but the, the money that we earned, um, in this regard is just in the liquid account, so it wouldn't be, um, related to those CD investments, so. So I do think it was a good move, uh, we did receive a call from Blackhawk, uh, they are, uh, trying to get those buttons back by getting closer to where PMA is, uh, that rate they're giving us, I don't know that they can quite get there. What we explained to them right now, we're not going to be moving it back however, as we need the funds to be in there, uh, for, you know, expenditure purposes. If they can get closer to that rate, we're less likely to move them back out again, so, but we'll see what they come up to. We are working, there was somebody else that gave us a call that we are working with, who I think is a little bit more motivated to try and get us to that rate, so.
From Blackhawk?
Yeah. So then, uh, looking at the investment report, um, you'll see those CDs, um, the CDR is just a group of banks, so those are the investments, we'll just call them something, I think, right, so we are earning four point one with those CDs. Uh, that's a little frustrating because our liquid rate is four point two-two, they keep telling us we can't count on that or stay there, however, it has been staying at that rate for some time, but, uh, as you guys know, the market is very volatile right now, so, uh, I still think it was wise to lock into that rate for six months, so.
Yeah, you want to see it move, just put thirteen million back in it.
Um, the bond portfolio management report, not a lot of change here, uh, you'll see that, uh, we are still within, um, we are under that arbitrage, uh, liability amount, so that's what we want to see, right now, we won't owe anything back to the government, and uh, we'll continue to monitor that, monitor that each month. And then lastly, the food service report, you'll see we are about, um, close to forty-five thousand as the wrap of the year. June is going to be a big tip for us because we won't just have June payroll expenditures, we'll also have those July and August payroll expenditures that will come through. Uh, I think we're going to end the year probably close to a hundred thousand in the hole, however, that might sound bad, if you want to mention that, um, our payroll expenses have gone up almost fifty percent due to those minimum wage increases. So Kelly, uh, put together a really nice report where she, um, pulled all the data from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and then the last two school years, so eighteen, nineteen is before COVID, before, uh, those minimum wage increases, um, those standards for those went into place, so we thought that would be a good year to look at, to see how things are measuring against what we're doing now, and so with those payroll costs being up almost fifty percent, our total loss is going, is actually, um, has only gone up twenty-five percent. So we're doing some things right to bridge that gap, the ladies are working really hard to, uh, you know, be creative with what they're offering, we're seeing our deposits go up quite a bit, so we're really seeing that, um, you know, where we had kind of, uh, bigger loss in the junior high high school, we're seeing those upwards that they're doing in there now really pay off to offset, um, those payroll expenses that come up so much, so. Yeah, it was great, and Kelly's going to keep monitoring that data, um, and use it with her paid paid tuition faculty tool, which, uh, just became available last week, and we're going to use that to kind of see where we want to be to keep getting closer to bridging that gap. And then you don't remember if you reported or not, but we did talk to Sarah Bonzak at our audit planning meeting, and it is very common for school districts to, um, you know, have to subsidize those, um, the lunch area with other local funds, so.
Yeah, so where we're at, didn't necessarily scare her, did that make sense?
Yeah, not at all.
Very good, any questions?
Thanks for doing that comparison, just to see how much things.
All Kelly, so, yeah, she's done a lot of work on it, so.
Very good, thank you. All right, for your requests. I saw you sent us a couple of them.
Um, just the, um, like, expenditure purchase order reports that they ask for two or three times a year, we aren't sure who asks for them, but, um, it's just a list of what our purchase orders or check, um, check registers are, when we send them out.
Have you asked, um, Sarah, if other schools get this and what they're doing?
No, we haven't asked her about that.
Are you like, hey, is this all scam stuff, or is this, or is this, is this something that you, you have a point that maybe you, reason why somebody does this, this is a, or we just waste a man and horse in some, some scam or deal? Might be worth asking.
Yeah, have the old AI one. They're asking for, I don't know, they're always asking for expenditure stuff, it's, you know, it could be, it seems like that, the post office, the stamp rate one, I think it's.
That I believe was from a real person.
Yeah, there's certain ones that you look in a car, those are pretty difficult, you get the one where I, I'm not sure, I just don't know why I said that, but different lawyers will tell you different things, and our lawyer says it's still responsible.
Okay. Okay.
Order treat. Yeah, order treat, uh, we talked about having Mr. Graham come back, and, and, uh, we have new board members and kind of do a little bit of strategic planning, maybe not commission bench itself, but still some, I'm just trying to get everyone on the same page piece of it, uh, he's sent me some dates, July, in July, uh, second, seventh, tenth, twenty-first, twenty-fourth, twenty-third, night thirty, thirty-first in July. Um, I know we talked about having, and then I will have some out, I'm in out for this day, some out for that day, so it's just kind of worth it for that time, you said no tenth and twenty-fourth, Lori's available to seventh, tenth, twenty-first, and thirty-first? So, any of those dates work?
The thirtieth's no good for you, huh?
Thirty-first.
I know, but the thirtieth's no good now, so you just booked.
That's already booked.
So, what were your dates, Lori, ever?
Seventh, the tenth, but Tom's out the tenth, so seventh, twenty-first, or thirty-first?
I'm not the tenth, and you prefer not to do the seventh, but you have four.
You said you can't make the tenth work, or you prefer that?
The tenth I can't do, the seventh I maybe it's a longer seven, or maybe one first?
Seven, or the twenty?
Twenty-first, or do you?
First? Works for me, good. I will reach out to Ralph and set those dates and, uh, make sure he's got them, and then I'll email you as soon as I get confirmation from him. It's a five till nine kind of deal, have, again, it's his group there wherever he wants, then, uh, and, uh, let Ralph do his thing.
Yeah.
Oh, sounds great.
If there's anything for the, I guess, sort of topics, yes, I guess, yeah, you'd be, I guess, a little bit of review and.
I think so, I, I think a little bit of review, kind of see where you're at as far as staying page, and, and as far as helping me where you want to make sure that district, make sure the district's going, that would be a good principle, and I have, unless you have something else that you're thinking. Is what that goes, but, I think, I think the last time we did it, we had really good conversations about, you know, and I know it's.
Just basically setting goals.
Yeah, 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 so, I really enjoyed it, and, I mean, they helped me a lot as far as wanting to know where everybody wants to go, and go from there, and send the help as well. I agree.
Will you host it here, or location?
Yeah, normally we host it right over in the, on the other side library there, yep. So, yeah.
Do we ever meet offsite? Or would we?
We have, we, we, we haven't, but we can meet wherever we want, we're just going to post it. There's options.
You mentioned to Tom that we have a new, um, more Scott elevation center, it's really cool, this innovative, very intentional designed space. It's flexes for events, but, but being a place to.
And places will be cool, Jen SEO just did kind of the same-ish type of thing, um, where they've done something to, I mean, the law district did a lot of cool things, you went to DLQWAN, with their kind of food, I don't say food service, but culinary side of stuff, and they, then they put a whole big kitchen in.
Yeah, they did, a library, um, redid some of the old sections, um, with technology here, yeah.
Yeah. So there's a lot of cool places to go, seems so, I mean, if you want to do something offsite, let me know, but yeah, let's do this one here first, and then maybe we can, I think, schedule us to go on to North Scout or, or go to the mall, that point, and see some different stuff, the place is pretty cool.
All right. Let's talk about the eight hundred thousand dollar in the corner, the Mercer County tax rate.
Uh, so, Rock Island County, great, uh, we worked with Rossella there, and she's very accurate, you know, have any issues, and so to measure against that, I'll, I'll first show what our tax rate is this year in Rock Island County. Uh, so our tax rate in twenty twenty-three was four point four one nine two, and as we, um, planned for, uh, it dropped to four point three seven nine eight this year. So we, um, the EAB values in Rock Island County went up about eight and a half percent, and in Mercer County went up almost ten percent, so, which is about four percent higher than what we were planning for in Mercer County. Just keep that in mind when we're living, uh, in November, December, that we now have a four percent threshold, so you make up four and count four. Um, so, we knew that Mercer County had made an error in their calculations last year, that they had make up four. That error last year was in the actual levy amount, they did not levy the correct amount for our bonds and interest. So, they, we already had, um, new to, uh, plan for that tax rate increase, and that is a Mercer County adjustment, has nothing to do with the school, um, the school's filing of the levies. Uh, but then this year, uh, the, the error in the tax computation is the, uh, overlap in EAB that's used, so. They hold our twenty twenty-three EAB values, and so we're using the twenty twenty-four estimated EAB values, so they recognize absolutely no increase in our Rock Island County property values. So, the result of that is that our total rate setting EAB is too low on the Mercer County computation report. And so, those areas where we levy an amount for what we need, the bonds and interest or court fund, our INR fund, those rates are then higher because those amounts. those rates are then higher because those amounts against what the tax um. The taxable rate setting is is higher than what it should be. But then also, the all the other funds where we have a maximum rate, we um aren't going to receive as much as we should. So there's two things going on here. Our tax rate is too high in error due to an error in the calculation. And we also are going to receive less revenue than what we should be receiving because the other classes were calculated too low. So we have a few things we're dealing with. Um the, there are situations in which he can pull whatever estimate comes in. Mercer County can use whatever estimate they want, that's if they're not provided the documents and information that they're supposed to be. Uh that's the claim that they're making. And however, we have reached out to Graciela and she has provided us five different emails that were all um. Well, these estimated estimated EAVs are available online and they were available online in October. It's pretty common knowledge that they're there. Uh however, Graciela did provide the documents to him with the timeline that she's allowed, so.
The RICO, the Rock Island County.
Yes, right.
Apply, give them to, what's this guy's name?
Uh Brian River.
Brian, and he has gotten done it. Now, I could be misspeaking here, but I think Mercer County has a history of screwing this up.
They have, yes.
But it's not just the last two years.
Right.
This goes back. Like six years.
Yeah.
I know they screwed up one thing.
Yeah.
It took like two or three years of bonding.
Yeah. Difference um then and now is uh she was uh Sarah.
It used to be Sarah Blazer.
Yes, so she was um very quick to agree to that it was done incorrectly and happy to fix it.
Yes.
The issue we're having now is uh reluctance to fix it. And our fear is that then we're going to see too big of a increase next year in that taxable resetting EAB. And how to plan for that and the effect it's going to have on the taxpayers, so.
Really, so, so we have an estimated ballpark of what that shortfall or.
Yeah, it was about 23 million that they um in the EAB value, not our.
Not not out, not the last.
Yes, right.
So they undershot the EAB by 23 million. That's just the portion of. So what'd they do to the rest of the county and how many other taxing bodies?
There are eight of, there are eight total or eight other uh over uh taxing bodies that have overlapped with Rock Island County. And we checked on all of them and they're all in the same boat and that's what they're, and they know that.
So that would be like a Sherard School District, a Mercer County School District.
Right, uh not Mercer County, no, just Sherard.
Mercer County has some, they have some students come out of Rock Island County, go to Mercer County. Down on the west end.
So but in that case, they would be relying on Rock Island County's overlap and.
Still growing.
Yeah, yeah, so. And Graciela, Rock Island County holds the correct Mercer County dollars, so. And we can show that historically Mercer County has used the correct estimated um EAB. This was, it just not this.
So what would you guess dollar wise were? I'm not guess, I'm pretty sure you probably run the numbers.
Um I I, that's hard to really give you a fair reality without a new tax computation report. Because I can run the numbers on what the total's supposed to be, but how they work out, how much Mercer County has to give us and how much Rock Island County gives us, it it, that's beyond where I'm able to calculate with my worksheet, so. I don't think it's going to amount to a lot of money, but uh it's still, it's still some.
And the problem is a long term rate that screwed up.
It's the tax rate. We ran on the reference, I know the tax rate would not increase.
Right.
And for a Rock Island County residents, it has decreased as your EAB goes up, it drops. Well, their 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 EAB didn't go up. So now. Tax bill's going, I mean, the rate is going up and and we have that because it's gone up. Now it's compounded on top of the capital levy for the bond last year.
Right, and that.
That was 57, 58 thousand.
Yeah.
What we have coming to us, we're supposed to give this, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that I want to make sure that everybody understands that it's not the district.
Can we prove to them we want 4.2 percentage of the bond? That's what we're getting.
Right, right. It uh it's going to be interesting to try and levy and make up for uh the shortfalls there and, you know.
Is this Kerwin guy, is he an electric official?
It was very, one method might be to, I mean, we'll get a mailing to all our Mercer County taxpayers and say, hey, your guy, you mentioned how you screwed up, put some pressure on him.
When we first, yeah, when we first found out about the bond, not the EAB levy last year, we talked with him about sending out a letter explaining whatever on their part, not on the district.
So this was the disclaimer, like, guys, we're saying, hey, my tax rate went up 37%.
So um we never did receive that letter either, so. We wanted to be right, we're not, we're not lying to our primary members. We, so not us.
Transparent.
Yes, we're very, we're very clear, so if anybody has questions, it'd be Mercer County. Probably they need to reach out to it.
Well, and this isn't just like a preferred practice that we uh could choose different ways to um determine this amount. It's, it's wrong.
Yes, so how does he get it and not make it right? I don't understand how that's.
The law that he's referring to is saying that if I didn't have the information, then I can use whatever information I do have, which is the actual one from 2023 instead of the estimated 2024. So he's, so he's saying I didn't have the 2024 estimated.
And we know he did. And we have the state's attorney to draft Graciela at Rock Island County and Sarah Bonzak to follow up on those.
Of Mercer County State's party? So Grace Simpson, she.
I don't think, I don't, it doesn't appear that that followed up. Whether or not she held up, she would receive kind of, you know, contradictory information. Graciela did provide us, you know, the emails that she sent with this email on it, providing the very information that he said he did not receive from her, so.
All we were asking for is just to do it right, just to get it right for our, for us. That's all we wanted, like, it wasn't a big deal, like, just make it right. Do the right thing.
And would all, and would have caused them to not have the big job.
Now, I have my job right there, still have no makeup for the levy, not the one.
But I did tell her that.
Now, they still got to call some of the dollars, but why they and.
Is it Jay's question?
It is Jay's question.
We've done about as much as we can do. We, we have requested for corrected tax bills to go out, so.
It's ultimate, or that if EAB was higher and lower, it may not be a bite time, but it doesn't matter. It's, it's what's right. It's what they've done, always in the past, we didn't even need notification that they're going to change it, so why wouldn't we?
What's the percentage of the district that?
Very much. 20. I mean, I can tell you with 25, 20 kids, I found, but that that's kids. I don't know how many necessarily families or homes actually are in Mercer County, in Mercer County that come to Rock Lake. I just, I struggle. We're being honest with our taxpayers and wanting to be in.
Got you, okay.
Our home, the home, our property valuations for Mercer County that um comes to us is about 5.5 million versus Rock, Rock Island County, which is 268 million, that gives you, I think, I do.
Just one right, go along. Brilliant, all right, keep us posted. All right, uh this time we'll adjourn to closed session. Talk about personnel, student disciplines, for building safety, et cetera. Sean, would you uh? I didn't, I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.